Good evening, welcome to Half Moon Bay City Council Meeting of May 19th, 2015. May I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Leva.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Mayor Fraser.
And I'm here. And our two other councilmembers are spending time with their families this evening. Could you please rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, we have a few exciting community things going on tonight. And the first, we will have a presentation and some information on the triathlon that was recently held here on the coast. We have a small slide to go with it.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Coelho from USA Productions. And this year, we presented the second annual Half Moon Bay Silicon Valley Sprint and the Olympic Triathlon. It was held on April 19th, a few weeks ago. And we just want to go through a few things that kind of present what triathlon is, the stats and so forth. But just to give you an idea of what triathlon, the demographics look like, its majority is male over female. Triathletes are, of course, a very affluent demographic. They've invested a lot of money, they have a very high household income. 3.1 million triathletes finished in 2013. The stats for 2014 haven't been announced yet. Majority of them hold a college degree and about 40 percent of the triathletes of sport have been racing for over 10 years. This was the stats from the Half Moon Bay Triathlon. We had 838 registered participants, 785 finished. Where did they come from? Five athletes came from out of country, which is exciting, from Brazil, Canada, Mexico, Denmark, and Russia. It's very rare for this type of grassroots triathlon. And I think it's just based on the venue, mostly. Twenty-five athletes came from out of state, which is exciting, Delaware, Kentucky, Massachusetts, Nevada, New York, Oregon, Texas, and Washington. And then the majority of the others came from, of course, Northern and Southern California. The other exciting elements is hotels were full. I took a survey and 30 percent said that they had stayed within Half Moon Bay, which is, of course, with the survey, that's still a large number. Here are some of our achievements from last year, of course. The biggest was that we had one transition. That was probably one of the big key points. Others were that we had all of our permits in hand and things to create a successful event. Minimal impact to residents and, of course, Highway One, which was one of the most important elements. Notifications, CMS boards, ways to let the community know that this event was occurring was all put together successfully, as well as the SMC alert by the Sheriff's Office. Donations, which is a really important aspect of getting the community and infusing dollars into the community. And we did that by infusing $4,000, which went to Teen Challenge, Boys and Girls Club, and other club affiliates that we have through the event. Volunteerism, another important aspect, was put together successfully. And we had one major medical incident, which I have to commend not only my medical team, but also Bay Shore, the fire department, and also the AMR group that here is and here in Half Moon Bay. The gentleman suffered a severe heart attack at our finish line. They were able to keep him stable to the hospital. He has no neurological damage, is now walked out of the hospital, is basically a miracle. So, got to commend everybody on the medical side. Who is USA Productions? We've been in the sport environment 24 years. We have 100 percent safety record. Our goal is to create the athlete experience. We do a number of triathlons across Northern California. Here's some images of the event, of using the Pillar Point Harbor area. To the left, we use the Outer Harbor for the swim. We use the Perched Beach for our finish line and our venue. And then we use the parking lot for our transition. You can see that bicycles were going in both directions, minimal amount of impact. We use the trail for the run course. This was our finish line at the Perched Beach. And, of course, the festivities after. This is where people are getting ready for their swim. This was one of our finishers coming across the finish line. These are our first and second place winners at a backdrop. Some exciting photos from coming out of the swim and on the bike or on the run course. Here's one of our Mexican athletes. Nice family photo. Our swim finish. Women cyclist. Our finish line. And then we have a video, I don't want to go much longer, I know you have a long, but there is also a video you guys can view at any time, you can have this file. But I just wanted to present, I want to say thank you to all of Half Moon Bay, and you have a superb team. I couldn't say that this partnership couldn't have been more successful if we wouldn't come together and put together the pieces to make this successful. So, I commend all of you. I want to thank you, and I look forward to making this successful for many years to come, so.
Thank you, Mr. Coelho, for that report. And thank you for all the input you had taken to heart. This last year, we had some issues and we didn't get near the calls or anything, and it looks like you've really got everything in hand. So, we appreciate that. I think it's a great event, and I'm glad you found a more improved location. Certainly at the harbor, it's more picturesque as well, too. So, I appreciate you taking the year to work with everyone and our police and sheriffs, and really took the feedback to heart to make this work and be successful. And thank you for the donations to our community as well.
That's my pleasure. Thank you.
Now, next up, for the past couple of years, we've been able to give some funds for some great students in the community. And we will be hearing from Russell on this, and some of the kids are in the audience as well tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're pleased tonight to present the Leadership Award recipients for 2015. And the Half Moon Bay Leadership Award Program was established in 2013 as an annual recognition of the outstanding achievements and leadership of selected middle and high school students from our community. And just show of hands, raise your hand if you're a recipient this year? All right, so, I'm going to be calling you up here in a little bit, so thank you for coming. The selection committee for the Leadership Awards is comprised of the mayor, two Parks and Recreation Committee members. And the purpose of the award, if you can switch to the next slide, please? Oh, thank you, didn't see that. So, the purpose of the award is to highlight students' demonstrated abilities and talents in the areas of citizenship, leadership, work ethic, community service, along with their ability to overcome obstacles in order to accomplish their goals. There are five scholarship awards given. Three recipients from eighth, ninth, and 10th grade each receive $100 apiece. One recipient from the 11th grade gets $200. And one recipient from the 12th grade receives $1,000. And may I ask the mayor to join me at the podium to help honor these exemplary young people as we give a brief overview of their actions? All right. So, our first recipient, Rachel, is Rachel Brody. She's an eighth grader, and she's unfortunately unable to attend tonight due to other commitments, but we're going to recognize her here anyway. Rachel uses her bilingual skills to, bilingual Spanish skills, to contribute to the community, helping others, and in support of kids in her soccer league. She also values and promotes being part of a team. She had the opportunity to attend private school but chose to go to Half Moon Bay High due to her love of this community. And she's learning the value of exploring possibilities and taking risks, which led her to becoming the, a yearbook editor. So, I want to congratulate Rachel in her absence. All right. And our next awardee is Giselle. Giselle Shaveran, a ninth grader, could you come on up? So, Giselle's volunteer work includes going to an elder community where she had the unique opportunity to sing "Happy Birthday" to a 104-year-old resident and see the joy that brought to the resident's face. In the midst of a housing crisis that she and her family experienced, Giselle learned to keep her faith and to never give up, and the importance of staying positive under even the most difficult circumstances. She's focused on getting good grades in high school and obtaining great recommendations that will help her achieve her goals of going to college and becoming a doctor. Congratulations, Giselle. All right. Eric, 10th grader, Eric Moreles, please join us up here at the podium. All right. Come on up.
Hi, Eric. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stand up.
So, Eric's volunteer efforts include helping out at the Half Moon Bay Library, organizing books, and working with staff on events. He's a very dedicated athlete and gained a new reason for keeping up his grades, as that is necessary for him to continue playing sports. That's helped him create a good balance between schoolwork and sports, which in turn helps maintain his focus on doing well and attending college. So, let's congratulate Eric for his accomplishments.[682.00][682.00](applause) Francisco Valencia, 11th grader, come on up. I feel like I'm hosting a game show.
Congratulations.
All right. Francisco volunteers helping younger students as well as assisting the Spanish-speaking parents during school registration. During a period of difficulty for his family, he chose to stay in school with an eye toward the future, even though getting a job would have been very important at that time. He's focused on his goal of being the first in his family to finish high school and go on to college while setting a great example for his younger siblings. All right. And finally, there we go, Ashley. Ashley, it's, Ashley unfortunately couldn't be with us today. She's our 12th grade recipient. She's unable to attend due to other commitments, but we want to commend her. She's local president of Future Farmers of America and works to encourage others to participate, be successful, and grow with that group and with the community. Ashley volunteers with a number of local service clubs and organizations. And she learned patience and fortitude while recovering from an ankle injury, which sidelined her from cross-country and track activities. She overcame that and went on to set a personal record in cross-country. Ashley will be going to Chico State to study agricultural business. Congratulations to Ashley. And can we have a round of applause for all of our recipients of the Leadership Award? Congratulations. And before we take a couple of pictures, I'd like to thank the people who were instrumental recognizing our young leaders of tomorrow with these awards. So, of course, our mayor, the Recreation Committee members, Charzad Pantera and Suzanne Malaspina Bruce, Gretchen Lynn Green from CUNY, Robin Howard from Half Moon Bay High, and our city staff, Siobhan, our city clerk, Luella from our finance department, Beth from our administration department, and Malcolm, who prepared all of the wonderful remarks about you guys today. So, thank you. And Alex, if we can come up and take a picture.
(inaudible)
I just gave them a certificate. And just to put out some closing remarks, these young students wrote eloquently, there was a formal process where they had to write about themselves and what they've done. And I know between Charzad and Suzanne and I, you guys did a wonderful job of writing your essays on why this was important in the work you're doing. So, congratulations. That was a big part of it. We were very moved by all of your remarks and how hard you're working. And you're going to be great community members, community leaders, and great citizens of the future. So, just a couple of announcements. The Seacrest School is going to pilot a bus program that's going to start out in Moss Beach. So, you'll be hearing more about that. But congratulations for Seacrest, they're trying to find some alternatives to our transportation and to getting students to school safely. This weekend coming up is the Holy Ghost Festival by our Portuguese community. And the parade, known as the Chamarita Parade to many of us, starts Sunday at 10 o'clock, and that goes down Main Street on a procession to the Catholic Church, which after Mass, they will return and go back to the IDS grounds, so everyone can have lunch there and watch the auction. And the auction and food and festivities will continue throughout Monday as well. This week is the week of the Rotary Chamber project, where they teach seniors at high school how to succeed in the workplace. I'm happy to be a part of that for the last seven or eight years. And everything from resume writing to interviews to modeling, all the good things that you need to do to get a job and succeed in your job. And we have Memorial Day coming up as well, too. So, those are just a couple of things. Council, do you have any other items to bring up that's coming up this weekend, next weekend? Nope? All right. So, then, we'll go to, we've had no closed session. We'll go to city council reports. And Councilmember Muller, do you have any comments?
I'll be very brief. Attended the annual meeting for Boys and Girls Club awards ceremony. It was well done. They've accomplished many things in the past year, so it was a fine evening and attended by all.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Reddick.
Yes, I also attended the Boys and Girls Club Dinner. It was a really wonderful event. A lot of great people and energy, and I was very happy to have been invited. I can say that we're making progress on putting together a process to hire a general manager for SAM. It's taking a little while. We did hire an engineer, as far as I know, extended an offer, it was accepted. So, that's good news. And as soon as we get staffed up, we can move more quickly on the recycled water project. So, that's a top priority. And some budget items are coming forward, I believe, next meeting to help facilitate that process. Thanks.
Good. Well, you did join me at the ribbon cutting at New Leaf a couple of weeks ago. And if you haven't heard, New Leaf has an annex in the building right next door, kind of between Taco Bell and New Leaf. And it's a new community resource. It can be a meeting area, it can be yoga classes, healthy eating, nutrition, all sorts of things there, too. So, look for the advertisements and for the schedule that they have at New Leaf. So, we appreciate all the work that New Leaf is doing and has become a great community member here. I did attend a heart luncheon with city manager and staff. This is Housing Endowment and Trust. And one of the features of it, they featured the Half Moon Village, our new senior campus living area. They had a beautiful film, and they had interviews from some of the residents there and how much it means to them and all the work that was done. So, it was nice to see it featured. And I know that's going to be opening up within the next couple of months, certainly before summer. So, it'd be a great video to show just that portion of it. We could show it here with the opening. I think people will appreciate that. I also attended a celebration for the families that graduated from the Community Learning Foundation that is sponsored by Toyota, yes, Toyota the Car. Half Moon Bay with East Palo Alto received a grant, a three-year grant, to help families with reading, getting along together. A family who reads together supports each other educationally. So, Half Moon Bay did get that grant and all the families that were a part of it. It was really rewarding to see them. They spoke very heartfelt on how much it improved their family life as well. And in talking with the leaders of the Center for Family Learning, they came out from Kentucky, they would like to continue doing this beyond the three-year grant. They were very impressed with how well this went. So, that was good news. And also, I attended a community energy forum. I've spoken before about it, and you're going to hear a lot more information within the next two years. Community energy, it's called aggregation, and that name might change. It's just another opportunity to have renewable energy resources that can be in the community. The county is taking the lead on this. And Supervisor Dave Pine and City of Half Moon Bay will be hosting a day here where you can learn more about that. But there'll be a lot more public outreach. But just as you hear about it, it's beyond PG&E. Marin started it about five, six years ago. It's been very successful. They have seen their rates drop, but that's not the main reason why that this is so successful. It's just alternative renewable energy resources that are locally controlled within your area. So, it's a lot more complicated than that, and it's important for everyone to learn more about that, and we'll certainly try to help facilitate that as well. So, city manager, could you tell us about the big fish that has landed on our beach and what's going on with that?
Yes. I will actually ask our deputy city manager to give us a briefing. He's got a little more information.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kojekin, Deputy City Manager for this fine city. Just a quick update on the 30-foot gray whale that came ashore. It still is actually in the tide area, so we don't know exactly when it will come ashore. It could go right back out. We contacted the Marine Mammal Center out of San Francisco. They came out early this morning at 8:30 a.m. to try to do a neuro autopsy of the whale. And they were having some issues because of the tide and the moving of the large carcass. So, they're going to try to come out again tomorrow morning. With that, they'll go ahead and we'll work with them as well as to, if it does get, if the carcass does come ashore, we'll work with Marine Mammal Center to go ahead and figure out whether to tow the animal out, if they want to keep it, or if we have to go ahead and bury the carcass as well. So, we're working closely with them, and we'll keep providing updates to the community. We sent out a community e-news blast today. So, we ask everyone in the audience, subscribe to our e-news, and you'll get updated information as we get it. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for sending out the alert, the very attractively formatted and newsy alert. I thought that was great to get, as well as the email heads-up. Thanks so much.
All right. We'll move now to public comment.
Yeah, actually, I'd like, if I can be part of one more.
Oh, you do? Yeah, I'm sorry, I was sort of waiting. I'd like to ask our Police Chief Lieutenant Muncie to just give us a quick update on the situation that the community and council may have heard about in terms of Hatch School that happened a couple of weeks ago.
Madam Mayor, council, good evening. Excuse me. On Thursday, May 7th, 2015, at approximately 1:23 p.m., the Sheriff's Office responded to Hatch Elementary School on a report of a threatening phone call stating that there was an armed person on campus. While in route to the school, the Sheriff's Office advised the school was on lockdown, authorized by school administration. The Sheriff's Office immediately set up a perimeter around the campus.
Excuse me, Lieutenant, could you pull the microphone closer, or maybe we'll adjust the dial here? We're having a little trouble hearing as well.
I apologize. Is that better?
That's better.
All right. There we go. The Sheriff's Office immediately set up a perimeter around the campus to monitor and control all people coming and going. The parking lot was checked and surrounding buildings and homes were monitored for anything suspicious. A plan was formulated to do a security sweep of campus by deputies and Principal Ward. The sweep of the campus resulted in nothing of suspicion. The lockdown was lifted and it was decided to release students. However, we were not allowed, we did not allow vehicle traffic into the school so that we could better monitor movement in students and parents. As a precaution, throughout the day and next, patrol units provided extra patrol and security on all coastal schools. My staff and I participated in the debrief of the incident, two debriefs. One immediately after the incident with Principal Ward and his staff, and the other with the district the following Monday. I would like to publicly commend the Krieger Unified School District. It was very apparent that they have taken school safety and the training for lockdown seriously, as was evident in this event. At this time, there have been no arrests, and the case is still under investigation. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions if anybody has anything.
Thank you, and thank you to the Sheriff's Office for all their work. I know that was very diligent, the way people arrived, and the school was very calm. Unfortunately, we have procedures that we've practiced and drilled for something like this. So, I see that's really paid off, so thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, if I could also just chime in, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Muncie for his keeping me abreast so that I could keep the council abreast throughout the whole procedure. And that was very helpful so that we all know what's exactly going on. And the relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Office and with the school district, I think, is very healthy and helpful overall.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all took a pause and a deep breath when we first heard reports of that. So, thankfully, nothing came of that, but I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we'll move now to public forum. And first up, we have Nicholas Davis Pyle, and afterwards, Mary Baker Taft.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Oh, you just pressed that button that's right in front of you.
Hello.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. My name is Nicholas David Pyle. I am the student body president at Half Moon Bay High School and a senior. And I have come to talk to you all today about the problem with the CUSD and the constant turnover of teachers and administration. So, it is my fourth year at the high school, and this year, Mr. Campana is my third principal. So, I mean, that's an issue. There really should never be that much turnover in an administration at any school. And I don't know if you guys have heard, but he is stepping down. So, next year, once again, we will have a new principal, and several teachers are also leaving. And I really think the constant turnover with administration and the teachers is mostly due to one or two reasons. It's either A, money, or B, the district is difficult to work with. So, when it comes to money, I think we all know that Half Moon Bay is not a cheap place to live in. So, when the district isn't charging or isn't paying teachers competitive rates compared to districts over the hill, and that's where more than likely the teachers are living over the hill, I mean, how, as a teacher, if you get an offer at a school closer to your home and about $15,000 more, I mean, how are you supposed to not take that job? That just doesn't make sense. You're obviously going to take it. So, that's why the high school has had so much turnover of teachers, is because other districts pay more competitive rates. And also, going on to the second reason, the district, the district is very difficult to work with, and also, they're not very good at communicating. So, that's just kind of like basic work function, really like communication and being easy to work with with all levels is the key to a functioning district. Now, I can really only speak on a high school level because I know that level more in detail than the other levels of the district, such as elementary and middle school. But I just know at the high school, we've, the four years I've been up at Half Moon Bay, we've really been just constant turnover with teachers and administration. And I think the district just really needs to remember that all of their decisions need to be centered around the students. The effect on us needs to be the center of focus because who are they serving? They're serving us. So, I'm not really sure what exactly is wrong with the district. I'm not sure if it's systematic or it's the people in that system, but something is wrong and something needs to change. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. Mary Baker Taft, followed by David Pantera.
Good evening. My name is Mary Baker Taft, and I am lucky enough to live on Naples Avenue, which is right off of Roosevelt. I live right next to the Roosevelt Ditch. And I'm sure all of us here have been hoping and praying for rain, lots of rain. And when it rains in Half Moon Bay and when we have a storm, if you live next to the ditch, naturally, there is some concern. You know, there's a concern for erosion, and then there's a concern for flooding, and then one... then, once the water recedes, there is a concern for mud. Because of the drought, we only had two flooding incidents last year, or this last winter, so that's not very much. And I want to say right off the bat that I am really grateful for everyone on the city council and all this Half Moon Bay city staffers. I'm sure that's not their correct term, but I know that there's been a lot of work on Half Moon Bay drainage and projects, and there's been a lot of time and effort put into the projects, and I know there's a lot of priorities and different, you know, permits need to be done, and I'm not aware of most of that, but I know there's a lot involved. And I appreciate all your efforts. The fact that you folks are all here and not watching the Giants-Dodgers game is a mystery to me, so I do appreciate your efforts, but I just wanted to remind you folks about the folks that do live along the Roosevelt Ditch, and obviously, we've had some issues with erosion. Some folks have lost, you know, like a fence, and people behind me, and the guy behind, on the other side, you know, has a cracked patio, and we have problems with the ditch. And so if you remember the folks on the ditch, and also the folks in the neighborhood, because we have had a lot of extensive flooding, and I would imagine, we hope that there'll be more rain next year. I pray for rain. I pray for erosion. I pray for flooding, and then mud. And if you'd like to come by with a shovel, that would be great. So thank you for the opportunity, and if you could just keep us in mind when you're looking at that long-term planning, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, but, and we're a little group, but just remember us. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. David Pantera.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the rest of the city council. My name is David Pantera. I am the student representative to the 2015 Youth Summit Committee. As you may know, next Thursday, that's May 28th, the City of Half Moon Bay, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, and the Cabo Unified School District are throwing their annual youth summit at Cunha Middle School. The purpose of this event is to smoothen the transition of eighth graders from middle school to their ninth year, ninth grade year at high school. This includes several speeches by motivational speakers we are bringing, and a club jam hosted by over 40 high school students who will be bused down to Cunha from Half Moon Bay High School that day, so that the eighth graders, next year's freshmen, have the, have an idea of the opportunities and the resources available to them next year at the high school, even before their first day of school starts. That's through, through the interaction with the high school students who will be on campus that day, and through the club jam itself. So I just wanted to thank, on behalf of the 2015 Youth Summit Committee, the Half Moon Bay City Council, for their support in both city and coastside youth groups through events like this. So again, for your calendars, that's next Thursday, the 28th. The community is invited to join us from 3:00 to 4:00, and the city council is invited to join us in the beginning at 11:00, if you would like to see the speeches that the eighth graders will be seeing themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's nice to see young people here at the council meeting speaking, as well as some other new members speaking tonight, too. So that concludes public forum. We move now to the consent calendar. And what is the council's pleasure?
I will go ahead and move the consent calendar, items one through seven.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. We move now to ordinance and public hearings. We have number eight, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute construction contract with Granite Rock Company for replacement of the Pillar-Cetus Creek Pedestrian Bridge for $932,310, with a construction contingency of $150,000, for a total amount not to exceed
Madam Mayor, thank you. We are very excited to be here this evening. It's been a long time since this council has given us direction to make Pillar-Cetus Creek Bridge a priority. While it seems like a long time, it's been super speed in terms of some of these projects, especially those that we're coordinating with the state. So I'd like to ask our Community Development Director, Dante Hall, to walk us through this project, through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Dante Hall, Community Development Director for this great city. This is a major milestone, and I'm really pleased that we've reached kind of a critical place in the development of this project, and really restoring the critical links to our coastal trail. So tonight, we'd like to ask you for authority to execute the construction contract for the replacement. Just a little history, sealed bids for the project were actually opened on May 1st, and the city received a total of five bids, and the prices and companies are listed in your staff report. Excuse me. The lowest bid, actually, the lowest two bids, were actually circulated to our project manager, State Parks, and city staff, just to really verify that the bid was responsive to our needs and what we asked for. And based on that support, we can confirm that Granite Rock Company bid is the lowest responsive or responsible bid. Granite Rock submitted the lowest bid for $932,310 for the project, and so tonight, we're recommending that city council authorize the city manager to accept the bid and execute the contract. We provided, in your report, a little bit of the schedule for moving forward. I can say today that we're on target. We're having to really buckle down on the permitting portion of it, but we're still working through that, and we still have a little bit of lead time. But we anticipate being able to go out and have the bridge fabricated, and we're looking still, at this point, to reopen the bridge in the fall/winter of this year. Our last slide is, you know, we're at a major milestone, but we're not complete, and I think a lot of this success is really due to a partnership that the city has had with all of the players. And so personally, I know staff would like to thank State Parks, the Coastal Conservancy for providing funds, city staff who have worked endless hours in trying to make this work, Assemblyman Rich Gordon, State Senator Jerry Hill, Congresswoman Jackie Spear, the Friends of the Library has been a big part of this, and really bringing this.
Friends of the Bridge?
I'm sorry.
There's lots of friends.
Friends of the Bridge, Friends of the Bridge have been a big part of this, as well as the permitting agencies who have worked with us to get the permits on time, and then a number of countless other residents and people that are members of the coastside community. So we'd like to say a special thank you to them. That concludes my report. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It definitely takes a village, it takes a village and a lot of people to rebuild a bridge, as we can see, so, and I know the permitting agencies are working very hard, which normally that would take four, six months for each one of them, after each one of them has finished a permit, so they're all working on the track together so we can have this open by fall. Council?
If I may, a question with staff. We give nice compliments to State Parks, which is great. Are we close to getting their final signature? It states here on the 15th, I believe.
Yes. And when the staff report was drafted, we had not seen the final signature, but since then, we've received the executed agreement, so we're ready to go with State Parks.
Councilmember Reddick?
No, I think this is great. I think the bid is nice and low, and potentially leaves us room to spend it on other bridges, and I want to thank staff for really, you know, working this one very hard, and working with the neighbors and the community at large to make it happen. So it's a great example of cooperation, that when we put our mind to it, we can really do wonderful things, so, thank you. I just wanted to point out that in fiscal impact, it talks about seismically upgrading the superstructure and constructing a new superstructure, so I'm assuming you mean upgrading the substructure of the bridge, so I just wanted to clarify that.
First page of the agenda?
It refers to seismically upgrading the superstructure and constructing a new superstructure, so I was wondering if you meant actually upgrading the substructure, the part that's in the creek bed?
Yes and yes. There is a seismic retrofit of the superstructure, because the current superstructure doesn't actually meet current requirements, but then there's the attachment point between the substructure and the superstructure, which will be retrofitted.
Okay.
So it's a kind of a yes and a yes with that, but actually, below grade, there's no changes, no issues, no things happening, nothing happening with the substructure.
Great. Thanks so much.
And council, we do have one card on the issue. Is Robert Buffer here? Buffen.
Yes, Robert Buffen. I appear on behalf of Friends of the Bridge, and we want to thank the council for its efforts in moving this, our efforts to, and your efforts, in moving the repair of the bridge forward. We also want to thank the city staff for all of their continued efforts in getting the bridge repaired. And the other thing that we would like to ask the council's support in convincing State Parks to permit us to use the balance of the funds that aren't expended on repairing the Pillar-Cetus Bridge, to direct them towards the replacement and repair of the Sweetwood Bridge, because that bridge, like the Pillar-Cetus Bridge, is rapidly deteriorating due to deferred maintenance, or lack of maintenance. Again, we want to thank you very much for your efforts, all of you.
Thank you. And as the gentleman had mentioned, I was going to bring that up, I know that the state allocates certain monies for certain things, but maybe we could engage conversation with them when project is done with leftover funds, that we could use that. All right, good. So this is, may I have a recommendation?
Yeah, I think it's with pleasure for all of us on the whole coastside that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with the Granite Rock Company for the replacement of the Pillar-Cetus Creek Bridge in the amount of $932,310, with a construction contingency of $150,000, for a total amount not to exceed
Second. It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. We move now to item number nine, Highway One Traffic Study and Congestion Relief Improvements.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is another project that we bring to you tonight that took a lot of collaboration and work with staff in bringing our recommendations forward. This project has a storied history here in Half Moon Bay, dating back to at least 2011, and some documents even long before that. So tonight, we would like to provide you with a status update of this project, and then propose some steps for moving forward. In terms of overview, there are still several details that need to be worked out with the permitting agencies, with environmental impact evaluation, and also concerns of the public. What we're requesting here is to affirm the policy direction, to retain the $7 million in grant funds for the design and construction of the Highway One Safety Improvements. And we'd also like the authority to meet with the community and the permitting agencies to refine the scope of the actual project for Highway One, meet and work with Mark Thomas and company to do some engineering evaluation. And then we'd like to come back to the city council within six months, after we've gone to the community, after we have consulted with permitting agencies with a refined project scope, then proceeding to a CDP application. But we believe that there's some groundwork that we need to do to actually make the actual So the PowerPoint presentation tonight does not include a lot of schematic drawings, doesn't include a lot of detail, but that's by design. We attempted to really keep this discussion at a higher level. Your report is intended to provide enough detail in the direction or some of the options, but we're asking you to allow us to actually go into the community to kind of refine those recommendations. So it's a critical junction that we're at. We want to know if we can retain this grant funding, but also, in the period of the community outreach, we have budgeted some money in our current budget to do that, and those are our funds that will not be reimbursed. So we'd like for council to give us the policy direction, like I said, to go into the community, and then return to you within six months. Highway One is, as you know, one of our, is our critical north-south arterio. It serves our businesses, our residents. There are some serious issues and problems that I think we can explore different options with the community, and then bring back some recommendations. It's influenced by commuter activity, school drop-off, a lot of different things are going on, and affects a lot of different segments of our community. John Dowdy is our Senior Management Analyst for Community Development, and he is the lead for this project, and I'd like him to actually come up and provide a little bit more detail for us, and then we'll turn it over to you for comments.
Councilmembers and community. As Dante said, Highway One, it's obvious, it's an issue. It's a challenge. It is what we use every day to get to and from work, to get to and from school, to get through and from anything and everything virtually within the community, and that is a challenge, and it's a challenge for every community that fronts along Highway One, up and down the coast of California. But that uniqueness is in each and every community. So we're, want to talk a lot about just kind of where we go from here, and how we start to look at addressing issues with regard to safety improvements, particularly some reductions in congestion management. As part of this, I think last council meeting, we talked about signal, with the budget, we talked about signal sequencing and syncing with signalization, and that's part of the work that'll also come along as part of this process. But let's talk a little bit about background and funding. We are extremely fortunate in this county to have the voters approve and impose sales tax twice upon ourselves and upon those visitors buying products and services here. Being a quote-unquote "self-help" community is very beneficial, because it provides a source of funding that we need to leverage against other source of funding that we need to leverage against other funds, including state and federal funds, and that puts San Mateo County ahead of many other jurisdictions and counties around the state. In 2012, the city applied for two Highway One-related improvement projects and was awarded up to $7 million for those two projects. As part of that process, we had letters of support from a variety of agencies and interests. But you can note there that the public safety agencies were particularly interested and concerned about being able to get up and down the highway during various times to serve the community, fire, ambulance, police, all of those services. So earlier in the year, the mayor agreed to form an ad hoc subcommittee and appointed council member Penrose to sit on that. We have had the opportunity to meet a couple of times, and one of those was to actually have a visit out to the sites, look at Highway One, look at Main Street, particularly in the relation to Half Moon Bay High School and the traffic issues there. That subcommittee, we look at to continue to help us sort of in formulating the community outreach process. In addition, we're looking at other safe routes to school issues for the elementary school and for intermediate school as well as for the high school. So there will be a continuing need for intermittent access to the ad hoc committee by staff, and so we're looking to continue to utilize that process. This project will have some fiscal impact to the city. These have all been included in your CIP and what was proposed in the draft CIP. To date, we've spent somewhere between about $80,000 to $85,000 prior year and this year. Prospectively, we're suggesting $165,000 of additional general funds to conduct the community outreach, to do the preliminary design, to get to the point where we can access the transportation authority monies. So, and we'll talk a little bit at the later part of this, but basically, you're using about $250,000 of city general fund to leverage about $7 million in funds, which I think in anybody's calculations is a pretty good deal. Again, reemphasizing what Dante said, the improvements have not been fully identified and fully vetted and have not gone through a significant community outreach and neighborhood process. So we're going to talk a little bit about what those projects could look like, what kind of improvements might be part of that. But again, the focus tonight is really to look at getting direction as to whether the council wishes to spend additional general fund dollars and proceed with community outreach and preliminary design work on this project. So the southerly section is pretty straightforward. Major improvements include left turn safety improvements for Wave Crest right at Cameron's, and then signalization of the South Main Street Highway One intersection. While those improve safety for motorists, the signalization will provide significant benefits to pedestrian and bicycle access, being able to cross Highway One to the Naomi-Patridge Trail. So it has multiple kind of modal benefits beyond just motorists and safety. We're also anticipating some median landscape improvements, and with that signalization, you would look at a reconfiguration of the off-ramp that kind of exists today, the deceleration, whatever you want to call that, at Higgins Canyon, and sort of looking at reconfiguring that whole scenario to, basically to provide a signalized 90-degree turns and intersection. So those are the types of things that would be looked at in this project, both safety, mainly safety, but then also pedestrian, bicycle improvements. So the northerly section is a little more interesting simply because there are a lot of neighborhoods in that area and a lot of interest and prior preliminary outreach work that was clearly an interest with the community in those neighborhoods to talk a little more about what those improvements might be. Clearly, there are a couple of improvements that just seem like they're very obvious. One is the Terrace Avenue signalization, which is required under the settlement agreement as well as the coastal development permit for the Pacific Ridge subdivision. Beyond that, also looking at trying to address the lane narrowing that occurs just beyond Main Street heading north, which creates significant backups during all kinds of the days, but Fridays and holidays and weekends significantly. And then looking at Frontage Road extension potentially to improve access left turn point at Terrace, signalization. And then also looking at how we can improve left turn safety and access for Kehoe and Grandview Boulevard. So those are the main issues and areas that would be focused on with that work. So again, one of the questions that came up the last time the process was out there is how does this relate to Pacific Ridge subdivision? And frankly, the question was, are we requiring the developer to pay for these improvements? And are we actually using the local monies, county and city monies to pay for what's required by the Pacific Ridge subdivision? And the answer is absolutely not. There are more improvements than there is money that probably out there that are needed. There's a $1.25 million already in hand with a letter of credit at the city for those improvements. Those improvements will be included as a separate capital improvements project in your draft CIP that you'll be looking at potentially adopting in June, as well as then the additional improvements associated with the northerly section of Highway One if you choose to move forward with those improvements. So that project continues regardless of what happens, frankly, but it is important that we think that that traffic signal be integrated into that broader perspective and design elements of the northerly improvements. Not to be taken lightly, recently, the Half Moon Bay High School, the school district, completed an assessment for safe routes to school related issues, and this was not intended for you, so you could read these items just to sort of put a scope and scale to the amount of improvements that are being recommended for various pieces of just the Main Street section to improve access for students, the public, and the like. So this is clearly one of those areas that the city is going to be working closely with the school district, looking closely at whether we can find additional funds such as federal or state safe routes to school funds or other funds that maybe the school district may have access to that otherwise we do not. So these are things, and these are kind of issues that we're going to have to be looking at down the road, so it's not a small amount of work. This relates very closely to also improving pedestrian access between Main Street and Terrace Avenue for students and for the public at large. So that's a big component to this as well. We are not alone in our efforts to try to address safety and just mitigation of congestion. Regionally, San Mateo County is working on a comprehensive transportation management plan called Connect the Coast Side. Staff has been involved in that process, watching it, monitoring it, attending meetings, and will continue to report back as needed in terms of how that relates and reflects upon the improvements contained in both these projects as well as those in the capital improvements program in total. So folks are, I'm sure, saying, well, when does this all happen if we go forward and we start to move this forward? And the screen is a preliminary schedule, but I think it's a fairly reasonable schedule to get to the point of basically starting today to get completion roughly of 2018 of all the construction. We can look at various components of bidding separately, the north and the south piece, potentially moving things a little forward. I mean, we can look at different scenarios, but you're looking at this as a, is pretty much a schedule. The big issue that we're looking at is really fall and winter, is to look at that neighborhood and stakeholder outreach effort. And that should, that will take some time, and we'll look at the summer really of this year to develop that outreach and implementation program, kind of vet that with the subcommittee, and then go out to the community with that process. And then obviously, there's the coastal development permit, SEQA issues, and all the like that come with that work. So there's a lot of work ahead. If you direct, nothing is going to be broken until probably 2017 on this as a realistic timeframe. So, to draw this kind of to a close, there is a strong relationship and role of the city council and of the city itself and city government to be fiscally responsible and to look at ways to improve public health and safety. And this project, from staff's perspective, really accommodates both of those. It leverages about $250,000 in local funds for $7 million in county funds, frankly. It also would improve access and safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as motorists. And combine that with what we believe is, should be, a robust community and neighborhood outreach process. So again, back to the recommendations, we ask that you authorize us to continue to seek to preserve $7 million in funds. These funds can be removed up to the point that we actually start to use them and to draw on them, so they are always at risk from the SMCTA for other projects, so we have to keep vigilant on that. And it's important that these kind of actions and policy direction are clear and are there because it tells the SMCTA that we're serious and we're moving forward. And then again, to authorize us to begin community outreach processes to work with and award a new contract, to bring that to council for Mark Thomas for the permit engineering and evaluation report, and return back to city council within 180 days to bring another update where we are and how we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you have any comments now? We do have several cards. We'll hear the cards, and first up will be Leslie DeMann, followed by Mike Ferrer.
Same name. Hit it wrong. Good evening. I am Leslie Ann DeMann, and I live at 517 Rousseau-Français Avenue in Half Moon Bay. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak to the council this evening because I believe that the traffic congestion in our town and on the coast side is a threat to the quality of life that we have here in Half Moon Bay and a threat to our safety. First of all, I want to thank you for your attention to this issue and the formation of your subcommittee and all the work that's been presented to us this evening to make it a better place. In addition, though, to your report this evening, there are a couple of issues which I don't think this report takes care of, and I would like to mention those. I know we'll have a chance to do that, hopefully, if you vote to go forward with community input and outreach, but I'd like to raise those now anyway. First of all, on many busy weekends, we find ourselves prisoners in our own homes because the traffic is so horrific. Friends who live in the south part of Half Moon Bay and want to visit me on the north side of Half Moon Bay might spend 45 minutes to get to our home. We had a party recently, and that's what it took them to get from Ocean Colony to our home in Frenchman's Creek. Same thing would apply if I wanted to go south, or if I wanted to go to the grocery store, or if, let alone, I definitely would not want to venture out on Highway 92. It may be illegal to block an intersection, but unless there is a policeman or a police car, it happens all the time on the weekends. A trip to the grocery store found me recently blocked inside the grocery area, unable to get out of the Safeway Center because cars were stopping in the middle of the intersection and blocking it. One solution may be our sheriff's department because I know when I used to commute over the hill, a policeman sitting at the intersection meant no one stopped in that intersection. Everybody followed the law. It's not happening on weekends here, though. Whether it's tourists or whoever, it's a problem. Unless there's another solution, I'm hopeful that at least temporarily, you might find the funds or a way to allocate a policeman, one of our sheriffs, to that location. Similar to the weekend situation, our morning and evening commute times within our city are unacceptable. Again, why not allocate someone to make sure that the flow of traffic continues? At least until you and Caltrans can provide us with a solution. Our traffic congestion in Half Moon Bay affects the entire coast, including our families in El Granada, Moss Beach, Montero. For instance, our grandchild, who lives in Moss Beach, commutes with his carpool for 30 to 40 minutes each morning to get to the high school. That's a long commute for kids. My hope is that you, our city council, will work with Caltrans to make the improvements to Highway One. And actually, the improvements you're looking at that he presented this evening won't take care of anything for me or my grandchild. So I'm hoping we keep looking to working with Caltrans to see what we can do to ease the commutes, whether that means adding turn lanes and merge lanes at key intersections or adding lanes to actually widen Half Moon Bay, pardon me, Highway One. Half Moon Bay citizens have voted to limit growth in our city 1% annually, but that shouldn't mean limiting the size of our roadways. Please vote for the use of funds for outreach to the community so that the rest of my neighbors and family friends can come and tell you the same stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Ferrer, followed by James Benjamin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Mike Ferrer. When Caltrans put in the light at Frenchman's Creek 13 years ago, they did so on an emergency basis, and that's why they put in a substandard two-lane light. It has been a good safety improvement. The people in Frenchman's Creek have a better life, but anyone living north of Frenchman's Creek will tell you that's a major problem at commute times, and on weekends, it's really bad, and the traffic tends to clear once you're through there. It's been 13 years, and I think someone ought to call Caltrans and say, it's been 13 years. Where's this, where's the real intersection there, the full four lane? As to this one here, I'm really glad to see that you have the pedestrian improvements on the east side of the highway, south of Highland Park. That's a very good feature. I'm a little concerned about the lack of detail at Kehoe and Grandview, and I'm concerned because I've seen some drawings that show a four-lane extension up past Kehoe. And I've also seen the county's Connect the Coast Side showing around about it Kehoe. So that's, there's lots of big differences there, and I think we're entitled to know what it is, especially if you're going four lanes past Kehoe. When I was on the planning commission, Dowling and Associates worked on the circulation element, and they thought that was an extremely unsafe thing to run four lanes past unsignalized subdivisions, particularly Grandview and Kehoe. And so detail as soon as possible would be very helpful because, you know, there are potential safety issues there, as well as whether we're getting bang for the buck by running four lanes northward of the Terrace Light far more than the Caltrans specification. Thank you.
Thank you. James Benjamin, followed by Jerry Steinberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. James Benjamin, 400 Pilositos Avenue. Nice to see you and staff this evening. Most of the comments from former Mayor Ferrera are well-taken, and I won't repeat them. I would like to bring up a couple of other points. In conjunction with the uncertainty about the proposed improvements, which I appreciate from staff is still under negotiation and you're interested in hearing from us, I wanted to put my concern on the table right now. And that is that the design of the pedestrian cyclist trail as it crosses Kehoe is a death trap waiting to happen. And I realize that sounds dramatic, but the issue is that at dusk and at night, if you're trying to make a left turn onto Kehoe from northbound Highway 1, or even if you're trying to make a right turn from southbound Highway 1, you are looking at the headlights of other cars. And that would be true whether we're two lanes or four lanes. And that makes it very difficult to see pedestrians or cyclists. And we all know that while they're supposed to stop at the intersection, it frequently happens that they don't stop at the intersection, and that could cause someone's death. We have certainly had accidents there in the past, and I think it would be a great benefit to have one of those flashing lights embedded in the crosswalk that, through some magic that's beyond my kind of engineering, they sense that there's someone close. And if you're, the car trying to turn left, you may not see the pedestrian. But if you see the flashing lights, you'll at least know that you shouldn't try to worry about when your next gap between platoons of cars coming southbound will be. I'd also like to comment on an element at the south end of the improvements. Once here beyond Cameron's, there's a long stretch from there until going out to the hotel and beyond. And it's not unusual for cars to speed up a great deal in that timeframe. My friend, Mrs. Pantera, who is no longer here, recounted a really scary story in which one of her children was involved in a horrible accident making a turnout on that road. To the extent that there are curb cuts for residential stuff on what should be an arterial, we have to live with that reality, and we should be keeping our speed limits low enough that that's a safe place for people to be. I echo the concerns of speakers that we want to have more details. I'm happy to have that conversation with staff, and I appreciate the chance to speak with you about this. Oh, if there's going to be widening in the vicinity of Frenchman's Creek, as you probably know, that's an issue, it might be an opportunity to get some mitigation money for, you know, some other project. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry Steinberg.
Jerry Steinberg, 591 Terrace Avenue. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. It'd be helpful to do a three-minute mini-review and highlight the significant factors in attempting to retain the $7 million grant from Semitao Transit Authority for the safety initiatives on Highway 1. Half Moon Bay City Resolution Number 16-07, I believe was dated in '07, designates that the $2.5 million from Alianto Properties be considered for use for traffic signal at Terrace Avenue on Highway 1 when the city issues the final certificate of occupancy of the 63rd home. Approval was given in 2008 from Mr. Dante, this has been going on for quite a while. Today, no homes are built, and none are slated to start this year, and permits have been issued for only the first phase of 19 homes. Bringing this up only because I don't know what the warrants for the light, if they contain any information about this. The origins of installing a stoplight was part of the precedent-setting settlement agreement between the city, Coastal Commission, and Alianto, which established a lot retirement program. It was $45,000 for each of 63 homes, allegedly for the tiny waterfront lots, and also pushed for lot mergers. That is, the Alianto lots are 10,000 square feet, which is a combination of two of the 500-square-foot so-called standard lots. The stoplight was thrown in to supposedly modify the Terrace Avenue residents and not considering the effects on Highway 1 traffic. No mention in the staff report of retaining walls up to seven feet high, which the Coastal Commission questioned as it modified the sightlines. The project does not address increasing safety at Spindrift Way, where anecdotally, information of accidents have occurred in making left turns into minimum space on Highway 1. Caltrans has questioned the safety of having to cross two lanes if Highway 1 is widened in making a left-hand turn from Grandview, and that's still an open question that the city has not responded to. What is planned for making left-hand turns from the city-owned Beechwood property across two lanes? Someday, I expect it, you're going to develop it. Does the city address the difficult situation at Frenchman's Creek, which has been mentioned? The light there was put in with the plan of widening the highway to four lanes. Caltrans has raised the issue of limited stacking space between North Main and Terrace. The DER paid for by Alianto indicated issues with wetlands and buffers near the Beechwood when widening Highway 1. The city attorney at the time, the DEIR was stopped, indicated that before any consideration of the stoplight, the EIR would have to be completed. Finally, I'd like to thank the contractor who hauled out the, cut trees from the Pacific Ridge project recently for using Foothill and Lewis Forster Drive rather than Terrace, just as many, many dump trucks have used this route to bring dirt down from upper county side of Foothill. Hopefully, the grading contractor would use this ride also. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to council. Or staff, can you address some things?
Sure, Mayor. And I know that there are probably going to be other questions, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The reason why we need some additional time to actually refine what the recommendations are, we need to make sure that certain recommendations meet warrants, traffic warrants. We also need to make sure that certain recommendations are able to be permitted. It would not be a wise use of the community's time to propose things that couldn't be permitted or couldn't meet traffic warrants. So we are doing just that, verifying with Caltrans and trying to work through some of the environmental issues so that we're able to explain those issues in a concise way to the community. Additionally, the speaker mentioned funds for the traffic signal and for lot retirement. And I just verified with the finance director today that we actually have letters of credit for, and it's actually $1.2 million for the traffic signal and $2.6 million for lot retirement. And we have those in hand, and we can draw upon those at any time.
Thank you, Dante. I appreciate that. Council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Reddick?
I share the concern about Frenchman's Creek. I know from going north that it definitely is a bottleneck right there, and I do recall that it was supposed to be a temporary fix for safety reasons. So I think we need to check in with Caltrans about the status of that project. I definitely share those concerns. I have tried to go north on a sunny weekend to go to a restaurant in Pacifica, and it's taken me an hour and 15 minutes on a late Saturday afternoon. And I know there's a bottleneck at Terrace, but there's also a bottleneck at Frenchman's Creek, for sure. I do think it'll be really important to have some schematics with you when you go into the neighborhoods so that people can sort of visualize a proposed project, if not the final project. I find the current illustrations sort of illustrative, but not giving people a good idea of what is actually proposed. So I think it'll be important to improve on those. I think it would be nice, this is just an aside, that with a signal at Higgins and Main Street and Highway 1, it would be nice to have a sign saying, "This way to downtown." That would be very helpful, I think. Otherwise, I think a lot of my questions have been answered. I do share Mr. Steinberg's concerns, but I think that we can answer those as we move through the process, and I'm prepared to support the proposed authorization this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think, first off, thank you very much for the beginning, again, a new beginning of this Highway 1 issue, and I think it's very important that we don't lose the potential revenue with our tax that everyone pays for. With respect to the blocking of traffic and our friends, trust me, I got on 92 and Hillsdale Boulevard this morning, and they have the same issues. If we were kings and queens, we could definitely figure out how to do away with that, but it's a tough one. A possible suggestion to our sheriff's lieutenant was we do have bicycle patrol now here. I see this past weekend as a beginning. I don't know if it's a special grant, but, you know, maybe we could look, particularly when the sunny weekends hit again someday, how we can kind of control intersections. But again, on 37th and Alameda this morning, people blocked the intersection there, too. So we don't have control over people's bad driving habits. I'm not saying I'm perfect, but we try on that, but I think that's very important, we look at that. And I think we have to ensure that the community knows in this outreach that this is a mandate with this settlement that some people are involved with in this room, that that Terrace Light has to be put in. There's just no two ways about it. That, I don't think we can break a court ruling on that. So that's a tough one there, but I think if we look at the community and have the outreach, which is very important to everyone, and ensure that they understand that these are the things that we have not a lot of control over, it might be more acceptable to individuals. I think we also should look at the little turnout spot on Silver Avenue there that was a potential entrance to Highway 1. That thing should really be removed or used, one or the other, because it really makes it look like you could just pull in there. And I think it's, it is barricaded off there, but that's always enticing to think that that was a potential access to Highway 1 there. So that needs to be cleared up, too, I think. But I'm in total agreement. I think the recommendations, from my perspective, are positive. The lot retirement, I think, is another subject that we have to look at with a number of individuals that have come before us in the last few months at the south end of town with Wavecrest and with our Bluff Tops and things like that. Maybe we could look and see what value is there because you're going to have to just give them an appraised value, but from my perspective, I don't think they're worth a lot of money at this time because there's definitely not going to be any building out there, I don't hopefully foresee. So, anyway, that's my opinion.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yeah, I do think that... I do think that Mr. Benjamin had a good point about the intersection of pedestrian access and vehicular access, so we probably want to look at those things together since the roadway improvements will impact the sorts of mobility modalities that we want to encourage, like biking and walking. And to Ms. DeMann, I would say, these improvements will help, but they're not going to eliminate congestion because there will be more and more people. As people retire, the baby boomers retire, they'll be coming over here weekdays, weekends. It's really not going, you know, to matter. There's going to be a bulge, you know, all week long. So I think ultimately, we're going to have to look at ways to get people out of their cars and think about mobility instead of just transportation, and find ways to maybe fund a shuttle service or what have you. But I know from working in San Diego County, they're trying to widen Interstate 5 to 18 lanes from 10 lanes, and this project has been in the planning for some time. And if you look at the environmental document for the project, it says that there will be just as much congestion when they're done as there is right now. So, it helps, these are operational improvements, but you're not going to eliminate congestion until you get people out of your cars.
I agree. And for a long time, people have wanted east side access to be able to walk, you know, from the neighborhoods to get to the high schools. So this is a mechanism that helps us get there. And I agree with the comments that are said, this is not going to be perfect. We've had great weather. Weekends may be tough because we have a beach in our backyard, but definitely, to improve the morning and afternoon commutes, we should be able to improve that. Although we've had our limited growth here, we've had our neighbors to the north come in, so a lot of that traffic. So I think the staff has done a great job of starting to pull some things together. There's still so much more work to be done. It is years. It's important to preserve this money. Definitely wanted to do that. As for some of the other comments that were mentioned, I noticed that we no longer have a sign that says, "Do not block the intersection." I'm thinking about just at 92 and Highway 1. So maybe we can bring that back with added language to however legal it can be, fines up to X amount of dollars. If you put those there, I mean, for the times when you don't have police officers, someone's sitting there long enough, because they are at the light long enough. If you read that fine, if you venture out there, it might get someone a moment to think about going out there, because it might cost them $250, $500 or something like that. So I'd like, just, this'll take a while, but if it's all right for council to take a look at what kind of fines we could have for signs, first put up signs to say, "Don't block intersections," but if we can add the additional language of a fine to that. Council, would you agree that we could have staff look at that?
Yeah, I think that's really important. I've been infuriated not being able to, you know, coming back from being over the hill and then not being able to make a left turn southbound on 1 because somebody's blocking the intersection. And sometimes, there's actually sheriff vehicles, you know, on the other side where it's difficult for them to maneuver because it's happening over here. So we might even consider intersection cameras. And I think that it's also important at the intersection of Poplar and 1, I see people going too fast to slow down after the light has changed at Poplar and just go right through. I mean, I see it on a routine basis. So someone brought up the idea of slowing traffic down as you're, you know, leaving and entering town from the south, and, you know, that might be a good idea. I just see repeat violations all the time, and I think it's because people are going too fast when they're coming in town, or when they're leaving town, they think they can, you know, speed up before they actually can do so legally. So, just a couple of additional items. So yes, I support it. Good.
Yeah, just final comment. We can't blame the buses for the weekend issue, unfortunately, but as a student talked today, I think when we visited with the potential search team for Cabrillo Unified School District, we, Mayor and I did stress busing to them, and hopefully that would relieve a little bit of, I don't know if that'll happen, but at least we can do that. But I think if there's no further discussion, I don't know, how do we, we support this policy recommendation?
Do you need a motion on this? We agree with these next steps, so we can do a simple...
The motion would be the recommended action.
All right.
So then I would authorize staff to continue to pursue the traffic safety, I would move to authorize the staff to continue to pursue traffic safety and congestion relief improvements for Highway 1 between Wavecrest and Kehoe Avenue, including the following. Do I need to read them all? City clerk?
No, you could just simply say, move the recommended action.
One through four.
Second. Yeah, you have no choice. You have to second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Aye, passes. Thank you. We move now to the next item.
Great. And on the last item, thank you, council, for that. I just want to echo once again that it was a collaborative staff approach to move this project forward, so thank you very much. project forward, so thank you very much. Our next item is also a collaborative effort that we've been working on for some time. It's the Quahog Conveyance Channel. And as you know, this project has had a fairly contentious history in the city. There have been various efforts to really try to resolve erosion issues and flooding issues. We found documents even before 2004, there was an effort 2005, eight, and nine. And after 2009, the actions were tabled, because there were a number of design and environmental concerns that were raised, and also there was a lawsuit and settlement ruling against the city in 2012. Last year, City Council gave us the authority to take a closer look at the issue, and we have done some feasibility analysis, and we'd like to actually provide you with an update on our feasibility analysis. That includes some of the options, design options, and evaluation of the ability to actually get these projects built related to difficulty in permitting and items like that. So we will do that, provide that to you tonight. Bruce Ambel is going to come up in a bit and provide us with some background. Then we'll walk through you with some of the environmental regulatory setting that has changed since the last time we probably updated you to this level. We have the Calendar and Associates team, led by Brian Fletcher, who will provide some detailed presentation on some of the feasibility. And then we want to put that into context with a master drainage plan. Council authorized us to take a look at a comprehensive plan, and that is funded and recommended in the next year's CIP. We're going to have one of our newest team members, Dion Early, to actually talk a little bit about that, and then we'll work through permitting and next steps. So thank you, and I'll pass it on to Bruce Ambel.
Thank you, Dante. Mayor and council members, Bruce Ambel, Planning Manager. As Dante indicated, we're just going to go through the fairly recent history that we've had on the project, but it really dates back, our maintenance activities from the period of the '60s through 1999 involved just routine maintenance. And then in 2005, we did, we actually designed a bank stabilization and flood control study, also looked at an overflow diversion pipe, a parallel pipe to the ditch, to the channel, excuse me. And then in 2008, we conducted actually an initial study and drafted a mitigated negative declaration for the preparation of the coastal development permit. That involved bank stabilization and erosion, flood control. That project was deferred due to environmental concerns that were raised by a resident. And then 2009, we actually performed some maintenance that involved debris removal and vegetation removal of the overgrowth. And then subsequently, in 2012, there was a lawsuit and a settlement against the city over the maintenance practices and some of the environmental concerns. Following back up, in response to that, the city actually prepared a retroactive coastal development permit for that past maintenance that was done in 2009. And then the city actually approved that coastal development permit again in 2014 that was subsequently appealed to the Coastal Commission. And that appeal actually remains active, so we still have an active appeal on that original work and the coastal development permit that occurred in 2009. And then in October 2014, we actually initiated, the council initiated, the contract with the Calendar and Associates team to conduct the feasibility study, which is the topic of this meeting. And then since then, we've had ongoing interagency coordination with Sewer Authority Midcoast, Coastal Mission staff, and then Regional Water Quality Control Board staff. I think it might be helpful to just discuss the environmental setting and regulatory framework that we're working from here. The Quahog Channel now is designated as a coastal resource area, because it is now environmentally sensitive habitat. That was the result of a map amendment that the city recently completed in 2014 that was also initiated through the settlement agreement. And there are the sensitive biological resources that are presumed to forage and disperse in the habitat are the California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. So that is the biological habitat that's sensitive and protected. So the significance of that is, because it's now a sensitive habitat, is that pretty much any kind of structural erosion control or flood control project that we propose is going to trigger an environmental impact report, because any structural activities on that property are presumed to be environmentally, potentially environmentally significant with respect to their impacts. So that's why any kind of a project, in terms of structural project, would trigger an environmental impact report. But right now, I'm going to give the presentation back to Brian Fletcher. He's with Calendar and Associates. He's got a well-qualified team of interdisciplinary professionals on environmental, biological, and civil engineering. And I'm just going to give it to Brian, and he can walk you through the feasibility study. This is Brian Fletcher with Calendar, Principal of Calendar.
Great, thank you, Bruce. As Bruce said, Brian Fletcher, Principal with Calendar Associates. It was my pleasure to work with the community and work with a series of consultants needed to kind of analyze the channel itself. Our environmental consultant, Jody Starbird with David J. Powers, is here tonight. Biological, Carrie Montero with SWCA, as well as Emily Straley with Schaff and Wheeler Engineering Firm. That made up the entire team that took a look at this. I'm sure everyone's pretty much aware of where Quahog Channel is, and I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview. The channel itself is just south of Quahog Avenue. It conveys the stormwater from the watershed on the east side of 101, underneath 101, to the west and out towards Pillar Cidos Creek, as represented in the blue line that you can see on the aerial there. And this is located between residential property in close proximity, just to the north, as well as on the south is all of the Sewer Authority property between the channel and Bev Kuna Drive. Existing conditions, you can see the channel varies in kind of width, as well as the amount of vegetation, but as you can see, there's many different areas of heavy vegetation, as well as some erosion happening on the slope adjacent to the residential. And you can kind of see on the left-hand side of the first picture and the right-hand side of the second picture, the close proximity of the backyards. These are pictures as it heads towards the Pacific Ocean. The one on the right represents a view, the sand property is buffered by those, the trees that you can see in there. So just beyond those trees is the Sewer Authority, the sand plant, and then you can see the Pacific Ocean. This is one of those areas, and we will get into the detail that we'll need if this project does move forward. One of the areas is necessary is a detailed topographic survey, especially of this area, to really better understand how the water flows exactly to Pillar Cidos Creek in the Pacific Ocean as it goes past the last resident. So our process really was a feasibility study. It was number one, first and foremost, to reach out to the community, find out what the issues and concerns were, and then look and evaluate several different alternatives to find out preferences and such. We did this through a several-step process. We did a site reconnaissance with the community, and those photographs that you saw actually were part of that meeting itself. We reviewed all the background information that Dante and Bruce kind of went over, the past studies. We developed four conceptual designs, had a first meeting, refined two of those designs, and had the second meeting. At the very beginning, we had, there were some initial project goals that we shared with community members, and then further evaluated these and modified these throughout the process. But there were eight goals that were identified. Erosion control, flood control, fire protection, a permissible project. Again, feasibility, can this be something that the permitting agencies could support? Preserve habitat, limit land acquisitions and easements, reasonable implementation costs, reasonable maintenance costs. So taking a look at not only short-term kind of implementation costs, but the long-term impacts of any of these projects on long-term maintenance. And you'll see, we utilized these goals to evaluate each of the alternatives. In the first community meeting, we presented four design alternatives. We provided an evaluation matrix, which you'll see in a second, that was based upon those eight goals and objectives, and evaluating each one of those alternatives based upon those, we asked for community feedback. Based upon that feedback, we, there was support, overwhelming support for a single alternative, some support for a second alternative, and very, very limited support for the first two alternatives. So essentially, we moved forward to alternatives for further design to the second community workshop, and then with those, we developed detailed cost estimates for those two alternatives. I'll go through all the alternatives, just so you can see what alternatives number one and number two are, but again, we focused on three and four, moving into the second workshop and beyond. The first alternative evaluated was to develop a retaining wall system that would keep the channel within the existing footprint. So this would formalize the northern bank of Quahog Channel with a structure. The second alternative is we call the high-flow pipe diversion. So this was to keep normal flow within the channel, however, heavy flow would be diverted in an underground pipe that would then flow along Bev Kuna Drive, underneath that drive, and then out to what's called the Caltrans mitigation site in Pillar Cidos Creek, to the south of the sand plant. Alternative number three, we labeled as bank stabilization with floodplain terrace. This was essentially stabilizing the slope between the channel and the residence, in many a case, looking to actually increase the spacing of the centerline of that channel from that, to slightly increase the distance of the channel from the residence. We would then also look to do floodplain terraces that would accommodate additional flow for the high flow. And then, you know, and then essentially, the channel itself would retain its kind of existing alignment. So that was alternative number three. Alternative number four was to dramatically modify the alignment of Quahog Channel, to bring that further away from the residence and into the sand property, to study a more sinuous or curvilinear alignment, more natural, that would then utilize floodplain terraces within that. This would create habitat as well. And then from there, we left open in this study, because we need additional analysis on where the water would flow from there. Would it continue to flow to the north side of the sand plant, or the south side to the Caltrans mitigation site? So this is the matrix. I'll show you it in a little bit more detail, but essentially, up at the top, those are those eight different goals and objectives, and down on the left-hand side, those are the four alternatives. What you can see is that alternative number one and number two have been shaded out. This was the matrix that was presented in the second community workshop, and at that point, options number one and number two were not well-supported, so we didn't continue them on. Getting into a little bit more detail, you know, alternatives number three and number four evaluated for erosion, flood, fire, and permitting difficulty. Let me get my copy. So some things to note there, things that would change. You know, the fire risk for option number three, we indicated low to moderate, because the channel itself would be in close proximity to the current alignment. It wasn't moved farther, or too far away from the residence. What you can see in the permitting difficulty on option number four, that was being proposed to fill in the existing Quahog Channel, which would be filling in the existing habitat that existed on that channel itself. So that's the permitting difficulty, in that we would be creating new habitat, but at the same time, we would be filling in existing habitat. Continuing in with the evaluation matrix, taking a look at encroachments. Option number four was high, because that was moving further into the sand property, and that's why we labeled it as high. Implementation costs, you get into costs for structures, additional land excavation to create this new channel for option number four. So you can see kind of moving through on these, you know, even option number three, you know, we were moving into the sand property for the floodplain terrace, that's why it labeled as moderate for encroachments and so forth. So I can, if we have further questions, I can get into the detail of this even more. But we went through this evaluation and presented it to the second workshop. In addition, we also presented a detailed estimate. You know, we're at a very preliminary stage here. We recognize that we do need topographic survey, as well as a hydrologic analysis of the whole watershed. However, we still, as a group here, took a look at breaking this project down into individual construction costs, taking quantities of earthwork, anticipated earthwork, and structures and such, to develop this cost estimate. However, I'll recognize that there are contingencies included. This is an early preliminary cost estimate, so as more studies, more analysis, and these items move away, those contingencies will reduce. But, and then the other thing that's not included in here, even though we have establishment, plant establishment for a maintenance period and such, we haven't estimated the long-term maintenance costs of option three or option number four. So you can see that this, these estimates include preliminary or soft costs, detailed studies, analysis, topo survey, and such. It includes detailed engineering, it includes permitting, it includes an environmental document as well. So we tried to be as comprehensive as possible at this stage for this cost estimate, but you can see 3.1 for alternative number four, or alternative number three, and 6.4 roughly for alternative number four. One thing to recognize on a project this complicated with permitting and environmental, it's not going to happen overnight. The schedule that we prepared, excuse me, that we prepared and talked about with the community, as you can see here, is essentially four years. You know, if we started design and engineering now, that process is about a year, just to get to where we can begin to do the environmental document, which is going to take about a year. Then on top of that is the myriad of permits that are going to be required, which are listed in the cost estimate, which we're estimating at approximately a year. And then you can begin construction, which wouldn't take quite a year, but with bidding, evaluating that, awarding a contract, the construction period, as well as the maintenance period, that's probably all in all a year. So that's where we get the four-year process. So with that, that concludes my portion. I'm going to turn it over to Deanne.
Deanne.
Dion, and myself and the rest of the team are here for questions.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, hi. I'm actually really excited to be the project manager for the soon-to-be-approved citywide drainage master plan. One of the phrases I want everybody to keep in mind while I talk through these few slides is about context, environmental and economic context. So on May 5th, City Council So on May 5th, City Council expressed its intent to authorize funds for the preparation of the plan. The overarching purpose for creating a drainage master plan is to understand how stormwater moves within this jurisdiction. That requires, at minimum, identifying the current deficiencies, the flooding potential, erosion issues, and maintenance needs. Also, creating a prioritized list of related projects to budget for the near, medium, and long term. This project plan is something that Hafnun Bay has obviously needed for a long time, and that's part of the reason I'm excited about being here. So the drainage master plan will also help us better understand how water moves in each of the five watersheds that are within our jurisdiction. A lot of people only ever think about Pillar Cidos, but there's more than just Pillar All five watersheds are mostly within the, in their entirety, are mostly within the coastal zone, so that obviously impacts how we look at the study. Agua de Water flows from the east to the west and then into the ocean. One of the other things that the drainage master plan will look at is not just Kehoe, which will be taken into consideration, but the 13 other conveyance channels and drainage ditches located within the Pillar Cidos watershed, which are the responsibility for the city to maintain. And last, but certainly not least, there has been a lot of work done, not just by the city, but by the county and other agencies, pulling together data, information, technical reports, doing studies. This is a sample from the Pillar Cidos Lagoon Habitat Enhancement Feasibility Study Final Report. There's a mouthful for you. And I think it's important to make sure that all of the information that people have spent time and money on, in the county, as well as in the city, to take into context all of the drainage, all of the environmental issues that we are responsible for moving forward. So that's the main focus, and at the end, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Now it's Bruce.
So, thank you, Deanne. But I'm just going to touch on a couple other key features that we're dealing with here. There's a concept of maintenance. Right now, our outlook for maintenance is completely different than it was a couple years ago, because now the Kehoe Channel is a federally and state-regulated area, which is presumed to be environmentally significant. That means even if we did a maintenance project, it would trigger a mitigated negative declaration and the requirement to prepare a coastal development permit, similar to the one we're still processing for the maintenance we did in 2009. We would also need to modify the stream bed alteration agreement that Deanne just mentioned for our 13 other drainages. We would need to modify that permit again to include this in there, include the Kehoe drainage in there. So that was about a two-year process in and of itself. In addition to modifying that permit, we would need to require, we would trigger permits from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department for biological assessment. We'd also need to get a permit from the Corps of Engineers for a 404 Clean Water Act nationwide permit, presumably. Also, a Regional Water Quality Control Board 401 permit, and it would also trigger a Section 106 National Historic Preservation Act review. We're estimating this permit process, just to do maintenance, would be anywhere from a year to two years, or possibly longer, and the estimated cost for that would be about $62,000. It would also be helpful, just to talk about, we're going to, in all likelihood, yes, we will look at applying for grant funding sources, and there's a number of opportunities that we can take advantage of. There are, some of the funded activities include habitat restoration enhancement, riparian conservation, trails and interpretive programs, water quality programs, any kind of flood control alike, those are potentially funded activities. There are also a number of potential grant fund sources, including the State and Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Coastal Conservancy, County Measure A Funds, priority conservation area grants, and potentially others. But we just, we recognize, though, that these funds are highly competitive, they're usually based upon regional significance and benefit, and ultimately, they're linked to the benefit that that specific project represents. So in developing our recommendations, the base recommendation is to continue and place more emphasis on consultation with the resource agencies. So this would mean the Coastal Commission, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Fish and Wildlife, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and Sura Authority and Midcoast, with the assistance and support of the Calendar Team, so, and that estimated cost is $10,000. And then, the second part of our recommendation really includes two approaches. One, it's an either-or. The first alternative is a, what we refer to or characterize as a comprehensive approach along the lines that Deanne was suggesting in terms of the sustainability and the comprehensive nature of all of these programs. And that recommendation would be to defer further studies until the citywide master drainage plan is completed within the next fiscal year, the next fiscal year being '15, '16. And the characteristics that that recognizes and allows for, that there'd be a balanced evaluation of citywide stormwater and erosion control vulnerabilities. We would assign priority based upon community need and vulnerability and benefit, and then that these expenditures would be assigned by overall community priority. We've also identified what we're characterizing as a flexible approach, and the components of the flexible approach would be to solicit proposals for the preliminary engineering and design. That would be the topographic and survey work that Brian mentioned, including detailed hydrologic and hydrological studies with the preliminary design, and moving the water further to the west, emerging with Pillar Cidos Creek and the ocean. And we want to point out that that, as Brian indicated, that is a critical piece of unknown information, which equates to unknown costs, which is those contingencies that were in the cost estimate. So these things are real important to get a handle on, because they have dramatic impact on the overall cost, which we don't know at this time. But to complete this part of the work for phase, for alternatives three and four, we've identified an estimated cost of $160,000. And I think Dante was going to wrap this up with the conclusion and the next steps, and reiterate our recommendations again.
Thank you, Bruce. And we actually made this clear at the council's strategic session. We believe, from a staff perspective, that erosion issues and stormwater management are among the top issues that are real vulnerabilities for the city of Hafnun Bay. There's a real opportunity here to look at this in a comprehensive way, and we're very happy that you gave us the authority to look at the storm drain, the drainage master plan in the next year. So we present this information to you guys, and we realize it's a policy decision. Excuse me. No matter what direction you take, we recommend that we continue with the consultation with SAM, with the permitting agencies, to really refine what an appropriate project should be. There's some synergy there. We've, we're starting to develop some relationships with some of the agencies, and we recommend that you continue that. With the other options we've identified, too, obviously, there are others. There are hybrids, and so we just leave it at your, in your hands to provide us with your direction, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. We have the entire team here, and we'll figure out which person is the most appropriate to answer the question. Thank you.
All this for a ditch. This is huge. This is very comprehensive. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, Deanne, Bruce, Dante. We've got a couple of cards, but maybe council members have some comments they want to start with. Councilmember Reddick?
I'd like to start and hear the public comment.
Okay. And, public comment? You said you did want to start?
Yeah.
Oh. Paula Eisen, followed by James Benjamin.
Good evening, Mayor Fraser, council members, and city staff. The Kehoe Channel has been a problem for its neighbors and for the city for over 15 years now, with many false starts, whereby the city thought they had a solution that gave the neighbors much hope, only to find ourselves disappointed again and again, because nothing that was attempted actually worked. The waterway continues to cause serious erosion and continues to threaten all the homes alongside it with flooding. It has been designated a sensitive habitat, as has been mentioned, and therefore, any easy, quick fix is not likely to happen. My concern moving forward is to have a comprehensive hydrology report that will hopefully establish how best to deal with the water flow from Frontage Road all the way through to the ocean. Sadly, this has not been done, and to me, this is kind of a little bit cart before the horse. Any of the options that Calendar and Associates came up with, to me, none of that is tremendously meaningful without that very important hydrology report. And with a real option that takes in the entire water flow out to the ocean, none of these options had that. Without that, all the work with the options, to me, was not that productive. What was important is that it brought the neighbors together, and we had a lot of input from the neighbors. Of course, the neighbors wanted option four, and one of the main reasons they were even talking about option four is because it moves the channel away from the homes. And that's the, we want to not have to deal with this threat constantly, and with the erosion right next to it. The other important thing is whoever deals with this needs to be company that can actually say to us, "We've done this over here and over here," something very, very similar. So far, 20 years in, everything is still working and holding. We did not get that from Calendar and Associates, and that was a big disappointment to all the neighbors that we discussed. We didn't have that level of expertise and history with this company in terms of what they were bringing forward as solutions. And so to me, it's so important that whoever the city hires, whoever the council approves to hire, has that level of expertise. The bottom line is, we need to move forward without delay and come up with a solution that we feel confident will hold up. And if you remember, I think it was two years ago, that very specifically, the Coastal Commission said, "Don't include Kehoe in your citywide drainage program." So I don't know why we're suddenly trying to mush it together in the citywide drainage thing, because the Kehoe situation has unique aspects to it, and they said, "Don't do it," and it wasn't done. It was taken out of the citywide drainage. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. James Benjamin?
Thank you. Good evening again, city council members and staff. Thanks for the chance to address this. There were, there were a lot of issues in the staff presentation, but rather than dwelling on the things that I think were different, in my impression, let me focus on a couple of commonalities, because I think that's a good place to start. One of them is that I agree that the consultation with the regulatory agencies is paramount. It's hard to apply for a grant until you know what things the agencies want. It's hard to feel justified in fleshing out a design until you've had enough contact with the agencies for them to say, "Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a generally appealing design," or "That really doesn't go." And I think that, council members, is at the heart of the issues associated with the Kehoe Water Course. It is that, it was a niche, not because just the court declared it one, but it has always been one. That's what our LCP says, that these streams in riparian areas are. And the thinking that somehow it's changed just because of that court decision is, I hope that we'll reflect on that and see it a little differently, because that's not the way the rules work. I appreciate the fact that it's being designated in the habitat maps, and it's easy for other people to see. That's, that's real value, and I acknowledge that. But how we engineer resolving the amount of water that has to flow in that drainage has to recognize the science of streams. They like to meander. And if we try to hardscape one side of it, we're going to constantly be going back in there and doing maintenance on that side, because that's what we experienced when we did the 1997 project for part of this drainage. So I'm very concerned about being sure that we've talked to people who have deep familiarity with how we do these kind of projects. And while I enjoy all of the members of this team who have, we've spoken with, and I appreciate the work that they've done, I hope that you'll consider pursuing an RFP to identify some other potential candidates, and maybe bring a set of people with a mindset that's not quite as heavy, that doesn't require hard-coded turns, and a path that hugs the riparian corridor. You know, you could use Meanderbilt and have streams if you have to, if the landowner thinks that's acceptable. You could have combinations of conveyance and capacitance, and you can interact between where the Kehoe has too much water and the Caltrans mitigation wetland doesn't have enough. You know, there's a roller skating key situation here that should not be escaping anyone. There's so much more to say than we can do in three minutes in this project. But I just think, understanding which of the possible solutions pass muster with the state and federal agencies with jurisdiction, which by the way, should include the National Marine Fisheries Service. I admit that the Section 106 National Preservation Act review is a new one for me. And knowing whether the designs actually can do the flood and erosion that we need for the unusually and uniquely large flows in the Kehoe Water Course, those are the things that are most important. I urge you to pursue them independently. We can have our own Section 1600 permit for that. It doesn't have to be combined with the one that's already been done, and it would streamline the process a great deal. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Warren?
Can I take off my SAM hat for this? I'm Leonard Warren. I'm not speaking for the Sura Authority, but I am speaking as one of the directors of that board. I was at another meeting, so I apologize for not having heard any of the presentation here. So the only thing I want to comment on is, I really think that the city council needs to go to the SAM board soon and present possible alternatives, and see which ones are acceptable to SAM board. It's not clear to me, and I just paged through the handout real fast, but it's not clear to me where the property line is. The city apparently has some sort of easement, but you need to know exactly where the water course is relative to your easement. You need to know where it is relative to the property line for the SAM-owned property, and any alternative that you put resources into evaluating that's not acceptable to SAM board is money wasted. So I think you're really doing this in the wrong order, and you really need to get a formal item on the SAM board agenda yesterday to see which alternatives are going to be acceptable to the SAM board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Reddick?
I have a question about some of the other alternatives that have not been preferred, but I think, you know, bear taking a second look. And one question I have for the consultant is, why in Alternative 1, using what looks to be a hard wall instead of something like GeoWeb or Gabions allowing for some plantings for a more natural approach to the channel?
Just to point a clarification on that, we did not select an actual protection measure. You know, it may be represented by a vertical feature or such, but the selection of that material needs to be done after further analysis and exactly what type of material would be appropriate. We actually presented these boards like this that showed options. It was meant to identify that specific material, specific methods were not necessarily identified just yet, but we would be looking at more of an approach to try to keep the channel in as much of the current alignment, the current easement, as possible. So I hope that clarifies. It wasn't meant to be represented as a hard, concrete wall by any means, but softer alternatives could have been, could definitely fit within that bill.
Couple more questions?
Sure.
So for Alternative 2, was any consideration given to a variation that might capture the stormwater runoff, instead of funneling it over to the Caltrans mitigation site or ultimately out to the creek to the north of the sewer plant? Was anything considered, you know, creating a marsh or capturing the water in cisterns or some other sort of approach that meets the do thinking about stormwater having value and capturing it, reusing it, treating it, that sort of thing?
At that particular time, no. We did not look at reuse and such for that particular alternative. What we were looking at was, you know, handling the heavy flows, you know, the rare occasion, and then maintaining the current flows or maintaining most of the flows in the current channel and enhancing the existing habitat. We did not look at reuse of the water at that time or anything like that.
And I noticed that there's no mention of the possibility of having to do a NEPA document, a federal environmental impact statement. Was that considered and decided that that wasn't an issue, or is that still something that might be on the table?
Typically, I'm Jody Starbird.
Excuse me, could you come to the podium?
I'm Jody Starbird. I'm a principal at David Powers &amp; Associates. We're environmental consultants and planners. We have considered that. Typically, you would go into the NEPA process if you were to get a federal funding source. So if there were grant opportunities that were federal dollars, that would kick us into the NEPA process. But simply needing permits from U.S. agencies doesn't necessarily kick you into that NEPA category. It would be based on funding.
Thank you. I may have other questions. I'm thinking about it. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think, as we heard earlier, a speaker at the public forum commented about all of our ditches need to be evaluated in this master plan. We have deep sympathy for this particular one, but let me tell you, I've been out to the other ones during heavy weather flow personally to assist, and they have issues just as big as the Kehoe area, in my opinion. And so I think, you know, looking at the whole general master plan of our stormwater is very, very important. I was even concerned about, you know, the potential this development up on Pacific Ridge where that water will be going, and I was told that it will not be going in that particular area, thank goodness, number one. And I think also, when we're looking at relocating waterways, I have a number of years of experience in permitting that process, and let me tell you, you just do not relocate waterways in a simple process. It's very challenging. I also think that the potential for SAM in recycled water, as Councilman Reddick was mentioning, we're going to be looking, I think there might be a period where they need to put water other places than where it's needed, so there might even be a need to put storage on SAM property somewhere out there. And so, we have to be sensitive to the SAM's ability to look at grassy swales and wetland areas and to enhance wetland areas in that area there. Piping also in the permitting process. Everyone is daylighting in the world now. They don't want anything underground anymore. They want everything above ground, so I think that's also a very important thing to look at. And if we move forward with the stormwater master plan, I think part of it, last Wednesday at our regional board meeting, we have an issue going with quality of homeless encampments and stormwater issues. So I brought that staff report here to give to our staff to have that, because that's going to be very important in the discussion also. I think we have to look at the flexible approach. I mean, it's just not one thing fits all, in my opinion. We have sympathy, but if you look at the history of waterways, they do meander, they take private property, but agencies will tell you, that's where the creeks and ditches and water flows, and it's not something that you're going to be, we're going to be able to continue to control. It does have a right to take land away from us. So that's just the beginning of some of my comments there.
I'll just make a few comments. First of all, you know, looking at what potential costs for this are, $3 million to $6 million. This is so complicated, and it's a ditch. You know, if there's opportunity to capture this water, whether it's ag ponds, or if you're looking at SAM for recycled water, maybe that water can be collected into something that can eventually be recycled water or something. I don't know that any one of these alternatives is perfect. Maybe a closer alternative and not as complicated, somewhere between 3 and 4. But definitely, we need to do a comprehensive drainage ditch. But I think, I know we have to go through a lot of agencies and permitting, but if we can not make this as complicated as this is turning out to be, I think we need to do that, because this is building a monument to a ditch. Now, I recognize that in Kehoe, through the years, is one of the worst, because people are losing lands. Other people are flooding that are coming across the roads. But I think we need to step back and take another look at this and find out how we can capture this and possibly use it for recycled water, capture it somewhere, and whether it's on the properties, because we do own a lot of property around SAM, maybe it's putting something there to capture other ways of this, and maybe it's through pipes. I'm not sure, but I think we need to do a lot more work on this.
Focusing on consultation, regulatory agency consultation. So what would we be doing different going forward than we've already been doing? You've mentioned ongoing discussions with various agencies, so what would be different with this $10,000 worth of assistance with Calendar &amp; Associates?
And so, I'm going to ask Brian to come up, because we talked about a strategy for that, and if you can just explain the consultation piece.
Essentially, it's presenting these alternatives to the agencies that we have not had a chance to physically do. So it's inviting all the agencies to an interagency meeting and having everybody sit down and evaluate these alternatives. Certain members have been at the community workshops and such, but nothing has been a formalized process, and you've also heard from a SAM board member as well. That's part of, that would be part of that agency coordination, so.
Yeah, I would think we would want to present all four alternatives and look at variations of 1 and 2 in addition to 3 and 4. And as you mentioned before, hybrid alternatives. And we may, you know, expand that conversation to look at stormwater capture mechanisms on that site or nearby, and potentially, look at eastside solutions as well. So the runoff is coming down from the hills, through the neighborhoods, under the road to Kehoe. Are there other alternatives that we haven't looked at that might capture it before it goes underneath Highway 1? Are there areas where we could do stormwater capture? So I think we need to broaden the conversation. So I do support continued consultation. I think, though, that it makes sense, Paulat Eisen brought up the issue of not having a hydrology study yet, and I'm guessing that as part of the drainage master plan, that we would be doing some hydrology analysis as well. And I would recommend that we contract for that upfront and have the hydrologist look at the Kehoe drainage and potentially, the other drainage that has ESHA and is but asked to be separated out from the drainage master plan, not treated the same as other drainages. And because I don't see how we can really go forward with anything until we understand the site's hydrology. And that means, you know, from east to west, that whole trip that the water makes. So while I support the consultation in the drainage master plan, I'd like to see us engage a hydrologist for Kehoe. Maybe it's putting money in upfront for that, but having somebody take a look at the water flows there, because there may be solutions that we haven't even considered yet. And I think it's great that we've had a landscape architect work on conceptual designs, but it's really going to come down to science and primarily, the water flows. So I think we need to engage that early. And even if we didn't move forward with any of those alternatives, we would still need to address the problem of erosion and flooding and the issue of habitat, and we need that information. That would be a suggestion of mine. I do want to say that I think it's important in the drainage master plan to not just look at how we might confine water or prevent flooding or erosion, but look at how we can use stormwater as a resource, capturing it, potentially augmenting water supplies, whatever. But that's where the money is going to be. There's a water bond that the voters passed, $8 billion, and it's going to be those projects that have stormwater components that are going to be able to compete better for these funds, as opposed to a straight-up restoration, you know, stream restoration. So I think we really need to, and it would be the basis potentially in the future for a stormwater fee as well, you know, against development, to make various improvements, whether it's grassy swales or whatever. But I think we need, you know, a contemporary stormwater plan, not just drainage, but stormwater. How do we use this as a resource? That would be another suggestion. Now, to the residents of Casa del Mar, there's talk of an El Nino coming, potentially a serious El Nino. I'd hate to see you be out of pocket for another serious winter, so we need to address your issues. But I've looked closely at Alternatives 3 and 4, and I want to tell you that I do work for the Coastal Conservancy. I have managed restoration projects. I have looked at stream projects and estuary projects. I've looked at hydrology studies. I think 3 and 4, based on their cost and their complexity, either outlets to the Caltrans mitigation site or around the sewer plant, out to the ocean where the outfall is, potentially very complex and potentially way more expensive than the estimates presented by the consultant. I've looked at the estimates, they seem realistic to me, but I actually think it could end up costing a lot more. And as for the plannings, you're going to have to do monitoring, potentially five years of monitoring. Honestly, I think the Landstra property is not large enough or unconstrained enough for a meandering stream. It's a fairly constrained urban site. Where they're doing a lot of these, you know, rechanalizing rivers and streams, there are many more open areas in the North Coast, Central Coast. This is an urban area, it's an infill area, highly constrained with easements, utilities, et cetera. I think anything meandering there would require lots of management, and lots of management is also very expensive. I think potentially for Number 4, you're looking at a $10 million project, and that doesn't include, you know, the long-term maintenance. And for most grant funds, you have to commit to 20 or 30 years of operations and maintenance, so that, you know, if a project goes wrong for 20 or 30 years, you've got to fix it, you've got to replace it, you've got to make good on your commitment. I also think that, given that there's, the water bond is $8 billion instead of $11 or $12 billion, like past water bonds, makes any money, any grants, applications extremely competitive. I can't imagine us getting the cost of this project in either federal or state grants. You know, maybe $500,000, you know? Maybe if you're really, really lucky, a million. But I really don't see this project, at least conceptualized, as, you know, being very well-positioned in a very competitive environment and, you know, being able to get most of those costs covered by grants. You know, are the residents willing to tax themselves to contribute? You know, that's a question I think we have to ask. The city has many drainage issues that need to be addressed. I can't imagine us tapping, you know, our funding for $6 to $10 million if we can't get grants. So I see a problem that needs solving. I question whether Alternatives 3 and 4 are actually feasible based on their construction expense, their long-term management and maintenance, and their complexity. I think it could take a long time to do either of those. I don't think it's going to provide immediate relief. So I think that we need to go ahead, consult with the agencies, talk about, you know, the universe of alternatives, do some hydrology, but I think we're going to need to look at a more compact, less costly alternative that provides erosion and flood control protection ultimately. And I think you can address the fire hazard problem with the pallet of plants that you might plant on your stream banks. I don't think that there's necessarily a fire risk with some restoration there, and I do recognize that we need to do some restoration, that we need to resolve the appeals at the Coastal Commission, but I think we need to take a realistic look at the costs and the complexity involved here. So that's a lot to talk about this evening, but that's kind of where I'm headed with this. So we can't abandon addressing the neighborhood's issues. On the other hand, you know, I think we need to take a hard look at some realistic alternatives that meet those objectives, because I really question their meeting implementation feasibility and cost goals that were set for the project. So that's where I am tonight.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Mueller?
Well said, Councilman Reddick. I'd like some quick clarifications before with the city attorney, but before that, you know, we've talked about Seymour, we've talked about Roosevelt, we've talked about others in the master plan, and how do we slow down this water flow is very important for all of us because of sediment issues and erosion control and that type of stuff. So just for the public knowledge, then, city attorney, Kehoe was taken out of the master plan drainage study, number one, on that one there. And number two, did the lawsuit settlement have a big impact? And number two, did the lawsuit settlement have a big impact with other environmental issues in that area, or was it just a normal procedure that we all go through with the agencies?
I won't say the lawsuit didn't have anything to do with it, but the reason why the Keough drainage is considered a sensitive habitat area is because of biological studies that have identified it as potential or even actual habitat for California red-legged frogs and San Francisco garter snakes. You're right, when we were moving through the citywide drainage maintenance plan, the Keough, along with a couple of other drainages, were recommended to be taken out by Coastal Commission staff because they were concerned that including them in the maintenance plan would just end up delaying the overall progress of that maintenance effort. So it was just felt that, given the attention that had been given to the Keough drainage, that, you know, it would likely end up with a much more lengthy involved process. And so that was their recommendation, and so that was the recommendation that was made to the city council at the time.
Thank you. So if other council members and the mayor, I'm pretty comfortable that there's some options. I'm sorry, mayor.
I do agree with Leonard Warren that the city should get on the agenda at SAM and talk about, you know, the universe of potential alternatives. As you know, the city is budgeting for a sea level rise study specifically for the sewer plant, which could impact what we do with the site. You know, long-term, you know, 15, 20 years, we might have to move the sewer plant. Where would we move it to? You know, I think that's definitely an issue that impacts this project. There's the issue of recycled water. So we're doing it on a sort of modular basis. We're addressing one potential customer now. We may need to add additional facilities. Where will we, you know, build those facilities? Getting recycled water going is very important for our community. There may be, there may be other customers. Long-term, I think California is going to be in a relative drought state, at least according to the state science. So that's going to be, you know, a very important facility. So those are priorities for the community, I believe, and we need to bring those into the discussion of what we're going to do with this site. So we need to get on the SAM agenda, I think, and have that discussion with their staff and the board.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. I do like the idea of stormwater storage, capturing it some well, especially because we do know the runoff from those hills is so great, so that could be another avenue for us. And I agree with what's been said here. So Councilmember Mueller? Do you want to make a recommendation?
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation that we proceed with interagency consultation using Calendar and that this consultation address is broad a universe of potential solutions as possible, not just the four. And I think we've already, you know, decided to put money into the budget for a drainage master plan. I would like us to be able to take a look at that scope so that we're addressing, you know, stormwater issues as well. And I would like to engage as part of that process, a hydrologist to begin looking as soon as possible at the Keough drainage to help inform the discussion of solutions. Is that comprehensive enough? That's the comprehensive approach, I think, so.
That's, oh, did you need to clarify something?
If you don't mind, counsel, one of the other things that would be part and parcel of that, that hydrology study is the survey work too. So that would be tying down where these boundaries are and getting some elevations so we get a handle of how that, how the ground is really working horizontally and vertically. That would be something that would be needed.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that information actually will be useful for different applications in the future, depending on how that property is used and what we do with the SAM plant. So I think that's a good investment.
And that's in line with the flexible approach recommendation that we made, realizing that we would continue with the agency coordination using Calendar, but actually solicit proposals for some of the other studies. And we estimate that total cost for that phase to be about $160,000.
Just say, I'm not asking for an exhaustive hydrology and hydraulic analysis of all the alternatives at this point. I'm actually thinking of a hydrology analysis of existing conditions. I mean, we're going to have to start there. So I'm not saying, you know, buy into the whole kit and caboodle yet, but let's understand the existing hydrology and hydraulics before we, you know, move on to more complicated evaluation of alternatives. So that's probably something less expensive than $160,000, just understanding the site, both the boundaries, the surveys, and the topography, the hydrology, existing conditions.
So staff, is there a motion you need on this or just this was direction? So that was in the form of the motion. You've captured that, you're comfortable with that? Okay.
I will second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 That was three ayes. Okay. Thank you very much. More to come on this. This is extremely complex, but I thank everyone for their comments, thank the public for their comments and their input as well. And John, would you like to close the meeting?
I think with the passing of Lorraine Dooley, I'd like to close the meeting in her memory. His family is very generous to the community with St. Anthony's IDS. They've been big supporters of Ronald McDonald House and the Honda Fire Brigade and Crap Chapinos Farm Day Luncheon. So I think the passing of Lorraine is a loss for all of us in the community, and I'd like to recognize a Dooley.
Thank you for that. And we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.